... Eighteen dollars. And it's a fact. Black ground. Thank you. I like the heat a lot. Yeah. Oh.
But you can't, it's a program, with this program, you can't.
So I'm here today to raise. You got.
Put a picture of him in there.
That's why I work. And Ryan hates me. He's probably. Throw up. I. He's working.
Thank you.
Sorry, that mayor sent a letter from. He said. Oh, we know. We'll do two of those. Yeah, that's a beer. I do. I think. I'm.
I told the players before we proceed further.
Just let me know. Okay. And while we're looking, I just want to. What page is that? Far I'm having a little trouble hearing y'all tonight over.
It says.
What the discussion is, I don't understand it. We've already passed a minute, so I don't understand why we're still discussing.
We didn't pass, we passed the eighteen, after eight.
We passed all the minutes. October the twentieth was the first thing we passed. It and after eight.
Well, we got.
The motion we approved, it's been voted on. Aye, aye, and a zero negative. Is that right, Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
No, the question that she said, that she, go ahead and say what you said, council.
Oh, I said that on page nineteen that I didn't, you know, I asked the question. Uh, council, I don't know why you didn't hear me, but I did ask the question about the minutes before she, uh, before I said what I said about page nineteen, that I didn't make that statement, that Ms. Toles made that statement. And I did say that, I did ask, and I was told, Mr. Bronson right there, she heard me, and she did say that it wasn't. And then they. So now y'all think.
It hasn't asked.
Okay, well, still, you know, maybe we need to put that in the minute.
So there's a correction on page, what did you say down council?
Uh, that was on page nineteen, I just.
Is that the only one?
It was another one on page twelve.
And where is that?
And I think council, Toles might have said that.
Which, which paragraph?
It was, uh, council, what it said, you can't make no point of what you were saying.
Some kind of, some stuff.
Okay, this is. One on nineteen. It got, uh, I was talking to a.
Oh, oh, all right, so we're, so we're good to go. Minutes have been approved with the correction of page nineteen and one, two, the third paragraph. So we all on the same page?
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm befuddled because once you accept the minutes, except if you can't go back and change them to.
But she said she made the statement before the minutes were, um.
No, ma'am, she did not.
Now, that's what she stated. All right, so now.
We voted and any.
Forward, okay?
The minute's already approved, that's all I'm saying, you know, it's already been approved, just like we.
But I asked the question before, even was the minute approved? I think I'm talking to.
Uh, we will not have, uh, anyone speaking out of turn, please. Uh, council, you've made your statement, and council, what do you stand, do you stand by your statement that you wanted to make that correct?
Yes, and it's, and it's nothing to be, for nobody to be upset about, it's just something that I didn't want you to put in the minute, something that I said that I didn't say. Or something that somebody else said and I didn't say. So I don't see no difference.
I don't think that's clear enough. We'll move forward to, uh, old business. Uh. Item for discussion is with the budget reach commission. First of all, I'd like to ask, does any department head or anyone within the department have anything you would like to, uh, report for the budget? And I'd like to say regarding that, that I've spoken with, uh, Ms. Laura Mathis with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. And I have a letter here that we sent, um, to her requesting that we, um, get assistance with them because they, um, provide services. And we, uh, we pay them, um, annually, and they are more than happy to help entertain us to help get this budget on track. So any discussion, council, before moving further?
So do you want to report skills or?
If you have them. I'd like to have them. If not, we'll move forward. Next item of discussion we will be going into, that closes out the new business, we'll move on. I'm sorry, the old business, we'll move on to the new business. And the first item on the new business is the debris on Powell Street. And I have a letter here from Mr. Lawrence that I received today. That he's addressed this, um, to ASN LLC. Mr. Lawrence, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up in there and tell us about it.
Well, that letter was, uh, the owner that showed up on the Wooderson County Tax Assistance Website was, was that, those initiatives that company. But on today, I got a phone number, uh, that was, uh, to Sam Miller, who they told me was the actual owner. So I called, and, uh, he, from what he told me, he thought it was already cleaned because somebody had promised me. But he said that he would make arrangements to, uh.
So you'll follow up with that?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Our next order business is the Mayor Mota Kate at Central State Hospital. And, um, we know that this is scheduled for December second, um, at one thirty P. M. at Central State Hospital. And I'm told that, um, Council Smallwood, that you and the previous mayor, um, genuinely work with this every year. Would you like to continue to work with the mayor's Mota Kate?
No.
Any other council members? Being that you all are new, that you all like to work with this, the Central State Mota Kate?
I work with.
Thank you. Councilwoman. Anyone else? Mr. Densler? Edie?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right.
Well, what's the best way to do it? I have a lot of people on there here, and then we go.
Well, Ms. Howard, I pretty much, it's one that, so what we'll do, we'll put a box out, so from the citizens or, or if you'd like to donate something, you all as council members to help assist with this. We'd certainly appreciate it. We have a gift list, uh, where they have males and females. And, um, they're saying their typical consumers are males and females, sixty-one percent males and thirty-nine percent females. The average age is thirty-nine, and they're Caucasian and African-American. So they'll need ice cream clothing, jeans, pants, T-shirts, sweaters, shorts, long sleeve polo shirts, gloves, winter hats, baseball caps, no metal, socks, underwear, bra, no underwear, underwire, sport bras, pajamas, slippers. Miscellaneous gifts such as drawing pads, composition books, no wire bound, stationary radios, playing cards, calling cards, puzzles, word search, crossword books, watches, no metal, wallet, men and women, no metal zippers, snack items individually wrapped in candy, individually wrapped snack cakes and cookies. So if you all would love to, um, contribute, we certainly would, um, appreciate that, and we'll have them sitting there in, uh, at City Hall. What's the date? The date of the Mota Kate is December second at one thirty P. M. This is in Village Fair. Any further discussion? No further discussion, any other items that I have on the agenda at this time? So, um, what we'll do is close out the new business. You have a motion to close out the new business?
I don't suppose we need one. It's made on the rule.
Okay. Being that we don't need one, we'll move on to the committee reports. We have Better Hometown, it's listed, Bruce Daniels available tonight to give a report of what transpired as we come up, please.
Yes, ma'am. Halloween night, our Ghost and Goblin Trail was very successful. We had over three thousand ghosts and goblins in town, um, at twenty-eight different locations of the passing candy house. Uh, young and old, we're dressed, we're all dressed. Uh, we want to thank all the merchants that participated. Special thank to the Gordon Police Department, Fire Department, EMT for making this a safe, fun Halloween, a safe environment. We had twenty-nine volunteers who made the historical ghost tours a great success. We had a, uh, the winner of our best dressed merchant was sweetly cleaned car wash, the guy in there. I must tell you all, he was, he was outrageous. Uh, best dressed cemetery spirit girls, with Tony and Cheryl Outler, had a great picture of them with Sheriff Chapman and his wife at the depot, and that was really good. Um, I also give y'all a report from Main Street about our other activities for the end of the year. Uh, and something to think about on that number five, Art Sillsby has been.
I don't have that copy.
Art Sillsby, uh, with the Lions, meaning Exchange Club, has always did the parade, and when the Exchange Club closed, Art Sillsby continued being the parade director and worked that out. Art Sillsby, of his health, will not be this year to be the parade director. Uh, Main Street Gordon, we built the float for Santa Claus, and we did the vendors on the green down there at Christmas. So we need someone to take over as the parade chairman and, uh.
Got you.
Got you.
What I'd like to say to add to that, yeah, what we'll do, I've, uh, have, uh, heard the report about his health, and so what we'll do, we want to, uh, the council, we're gonna help spin here this Christmas parade this year.
Great. Uh, I do want to say one thing, we're very proud that Colonial Wigglesburg Foundation has extended their deep appreciation to Main Street Gordon for their efforts in our historical preservation. And we got a, what was it, Roy, a flag, uh, original flag of thirteen columns. We also got one they're on, but they, they pass out for us, and we're, we're very appreciative of that. And just one thing, uh, this is a cemetery, well, no, this is what the cemetery would look like when we finish it. And, uh, the money has already been appropriated for the fence, and the columns are already finished, so all we wait for now is whatever steps we need to do to get the fence up. And, uh, and then that Gordon Cemetery will be finished, and hopefully next year we can fly up for some more grants from the Watson Foundation to do additional work out there. Any questions?
We appreciate it, we sure do, thank y'all, all of you.
Uh, one other question, so, uh, with that being said, you, I know about Christmas, but you don't have anything else on your agenda for us this year, right?
Uh, we've got our, uh, Christmas parade, we're working on, uh, merchant books, and we've got the, uh, Ruthous Kelly hundred fifty anniversary on November the fifteenth at the depot.
That's what.
The reenactment of Ruthous Kelly, one hundred fifty anniversary. And that's on November the fifteenth, we're working with the Historical Society on this reenactment. So hopefully everyone can come out and participate, it'll be a historical event, I'll be proud of.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we have, um, on the committee reports, we hear from the police department, councilwoman Toles.
I don't have anything, I'll let you call here for a second.
Chief, anything you need to add to that letter?
We need to get the cameras in.
You did get it?
Yes, ma'am, we need to get the cameras in.
How are they working?
Uh, just got them in, it's just. Right.
All right, we're here from fire.
So far, everything's been pretty good, uh, as the weather cools down, it starts, uh, a little problem with, people firing up the heater. Just be careful, make sure you have your heater checked out, and haven't got any, uh, you know, things in it that have caused any problems, you know? And I do want to just reiterate what Mr. Bruce said, we thank all the volunteers for helping out downtown, made it a real safe event. We blocked all the streets, there was no traffic around, and everybody, you know, was real safe, I thought everything was real good.
Yeah, a lot of the volunteer farmer and all that, done a lot of them, just did get paid, my dad done an awesome job.
I wonder if. I will say add one thing, ma'am, we had, uh, several visitors from Atlanta come down to our ghost tours, and, uh, I guess people all over the county came into Gordon because we had people I've never seen before.
They heard about the way town's going, I'm sure. Okay, uh, water sewer sanitation, we don't have anyone over there to give a report of that. Mr. Lawrence, are you here?
Yes, ma'am.
How's that going right now, you attendably, uh, water sewer sanitation?
Uh, everything's going fine.
Thank you. My next, we still, um, our liaison, moving on to street.
Uh, I had a complaint from, uh, the resident up on Hillcrest Street, and, um, they're complaining about the street. Uh, it's supposed to be a two-lane street, I mean, uh, a two-lane, but I don't know whether it's washed away or what that happened, but it, it's, it's just now, it's, now it is a one, can't put one car travel on that street at a time. When you go up by that Hope residence, uh, two cars, it's, it's a two-lane, but once you go on down the street, uh, it's turned into a one-lane. Can't put one car travel there.
Is that where Mr. Ashley?
Yeah, where Mr. Ashley is.
Okay, well, that would be that. Uh, Chief, have you had an opportunity to get those listings to me for me?
Ms. Woodburn. I was talking about getting the streets up, you said you already had the streets listed, streets for all the bad roads?
Yeah, I didn't have that one on there, so I just went and, you know, just reported to them.
I think it's a place where they had, uh, that was a place where y'all done some work.
They said they had, they said they had reported it once before, they had been here before, they had reported.
The section she's talking about is not where we worked before, but it's always has been, uh, narrow from, uh, Mr. Will Ashley's on that toward, uh, Gordon Boulevard. Because there's no ditch there, there's no shoulder there, I don't know, uh, to have the ditch, you want to either have a ditch or the shoulder, there's not enough room for, for both.
And, and the cars, the cars cannot pave.
Right.
One car on it. Well, um, Mr. Lawrence, you think y'all can put up some kind of sign, because it's fair, it has, you think y'all can put up a sign saying, you know, that only one car can travel?
Uh. We'll, we'll check it and, um, see what, what kind of sign is y'all, or, yeah, or even if we can add some dirt to kind of widen it just a little bit. Accommodate to, I just have to.
Because I, I, I went by myself and shit, and it, and it just can't, one car get.
What I'd like to say, uh, Superintendent.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chief, being that you all know the roads fairly well, um, I do have a letter here, and I spoke with Ms. Mathis about this because they will now be assisting us with these grants. And as of, uh, we want to make every effort to ensure that each local government is aware of the L. M. I. G. program. This is with the Georgia Department of Transportation. So what will you have to do, just as you're saying, council, and Woodburn, I'll get with you, um, we will need to get a listing of all and the bad roads, what we consider. Um, and we will make sure that we submit a status report, a project along with our twenty fifteen application regarding these roads that need help. So you all, I'm asking that you all work together and identify these roads, and, and we'll get it to, uh, Mr. Gabriel at our earliest. So thank y'all in advance.
So that's what I'm just saying, if we could, like what we did with flash food, uh, when we put the sign up there until they got that fixed, that we could just do something like that, because you don't want to accident happen because somebody could easily have accident that street.
Thank you so very much.
And the lights, uh, that was supposed to be fixed at Saratoga Way, they haven't been fixed yet, and it's still very dark out there. All the lights are out.
Who's responsible for that?
Well, we, we talked about it.
Did I make this comment, I mean, I might can help, I don't.
Yeah.
When, when that, when that road was built, it was a private road, WKA owners built that, the Stowers family, and they built it as like private, you know, development. But when WKA sold out the active minerals, they turned around and wanted to, you know, give the streets to the city, you know? And we started on it, and I, you'd have to have, uh, you know, Attorney Boone if it was up to him, I, I don't remember for sure if we did or not. They were supposed to give us the streets and, you know, deed them to us, but, but Fred, you've been with a little bit, but I, I don't remember enough to know if we ever got, you know, in writing and deed it to us, you know? So I'm not gonna get, uh, Mr. Boone didn't do a little background checking on it, you know?
What's your recollection, um?
They just, we never did, you know, did the street. Well, I know that's.
So there was in writing, do you?
I think it would mostly be simply, uh, you know, it's like getting the bugs changed, uh, somebody calling George Powell or something.
George Powell's not gonna change it unless it's the city's, unless it's the city's, y'all.
Because we, we had discussion before.
Each amount, each, uh, each, uh, security line they have. And some of the lights we had marked. We marked some of them for George Powell to fix and never got fixed.
So did George Powell get called?
George Powell, we sent that to City Hall and Heather, usually Powell's had another straight on to, uh, George Powell.
Okay, well, I checked today, I checked with, with Miss Warner today, so I guess he can call and check with George Powell again, because I think he got.
Excuse me, if it's not ours, we can keep, that's, that's the question.
Okay. Okay, so you didn't know that today when I talked to you?
I have heard in the past, but I didn't know where we stood on that either, that's why they're saying we could, like, we could turn them.
Okay.
The, the Woodburn, I checked my files, sometime around two thousand six, two thousand seven, I think it started in two thousand five, and then it deed that property right away to the city. And there was a plat made by Donnie Brooks, and I was in touch with the attorney who was handling that, I guess, the WKA. And the deed, first couple, couple copies of the deed that I received was not, uh, correct. And I don't know what happened, but I guess it just finally died out because we never got a deed that, that I prepared to approve or have the city. The property never was deeded, right away, never was deeded to the city of Gordon. So it's still private property.
It's in the city, but it's private property.
Definitely. What I wanted to do was to deed those streets, sewage pump station out there, and some other deed, I think. But I don't, never, never downed.
But you really don't know why.
But they never did give us a deed that was acceptable to recall.
When you say a deed that was acceptable, what, what is acceptable and not acceptable? What, I mean, can you differentiate between the two? What, I mean, can you differentiate between the two?
I don't have Dr. Whitten there, but like I said, there was a mention of the sewage pumping station in there. Should have been included in the deed, I don't think it was. There were questions whether or not the Jordan Power poles, which I was talking about, the lights were actually within the light of way of the streets. That never was a law. So I mean, if you don't know where the poles were on the light of way or not, you certainly don't want to accept the street. You're not gonna have a complete package. The pole was still built private, still built private property.
So in other words, we can't...
So the city didn't put the lights out?
No, ma'am, the city didn't do anything about that. That was all private property.
But it is, it is in the city and in the support of the light.
The city limits, but it's still private property. The deeds, the streets never were deeded to the city. The city never voted to accept those streets.
So the best approach would be from the legal perspective would be what?
It would be the owners of some deed, WKA or the Sellers family, time for you to contact their property, their street.
So how long have they been out there?
Two thousand and so, at least. Been a while.
And the light's been there all the time and now they go out and nobody can? Is the first time the lights ever went off?
I don't know. We've never had to mark them before. We mark all the lights, I know Tommy, where it's midnight yet.
Tommy, you have never worked?
I'm, excuse me, I did mark though.
Have you been out before in the last five, six years, how many times you ever?
Yeah, I marked them. I marked them probably in the past five, six years. I did mark them, but nothing was never done.
But the address was up. We had to give an address for where the closest light is connected to, the name of the road and the address of the house. And then we had to mark it with a red flag and tape, yellow flag and tape, whatever. And we'll give a list to City Hall. City Hall will then file a list, then have a fax list over to George Powell.
So that's the problem, they never got faxed over to the city.
They got faxed up, everybody got faxed to George Powell because all the other lights got fixed.
Except for those.
Except for them.
And they don't belong to, that's what we say. All of that is underground electrical service. There's no poles, you know, power poles above ground, everything. It's all, and they put all underground service connections. They don't have any easement to right of ways, so those poles belong to, you know, family that put them there, which was the Sellers family, which was WKA.
Well, thinking back, that was pressing on me, Mr. E. I think that was part of the issue with the deed and all that was where those underground tubes were.
Right.
Whether they were part of the light of way or not.
There's several, if you ride down it, there's several big, I know Tommy, it'd be broke. There's several big old, you know, metal bars just sitting inside the road. And those, that's where the connection goes. I mean, the poles are sitting back farther away than those are, you know.
So the city didn't own it then?
No, we, if the people that live over there should contact the Sellers family. They operate, you know, their feed and so forth.
City did not, because city didn't own anything, put a light up on it. The horn is on it. The city didn't do the road or nothing. The hip road and everything up there, you know.
Sounds like that's a situation out of the city's hands. You might want to... Excuse me?
I said, no, the free island, I think.
Pole, pole next to it.
Well, we've got that resolved, that the city doesn't own it, the city didn't put it out there.
But the city didn't put it out there? But I thought all the city, everybody, city limit had lights on their streets and they didn't see the street. The city didn't see the street?
Private, private.
What if it's a private thing?
All right.
I have one more thing that I would like to say to Mr. Bruce Daniel. I want to say that we really enjoyed the Halloween festival on Friday. It was really good and I think it brought out all the child and all of us. Because when we got through giving our candy, we trick or treated too. So we really, I just want you to know that we really enjoyed. And we did a great job, you and yourself.
No further business, I don't have anything to discuss. Council will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, of course not. We might get in the arrangements, have a ballot election.
That's forthcoming. I've spoken with the superintendent of elections and they've advised me, so we'll...
Mr. Marwood, I think that was on the, that was on the agenda last time taken off. The council does have to have the resolution notifying election superintendent. There is a vacancy and the council requesting the election superintendent to call a special election. And the earliest that could be will be in March of 2015.
Right, and I've already done, we've not done the resolution, but I will entertain that at the next meeting. But this time, we're, this is why I want to take it step by step. She's been notified and I understand that. So there being no further discussion, we'll move forward to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?